Welcome to the November 10th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Ms. Madeline Skels Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, ma'am. May we bow our heads? And let us all take a moment just to be silent within our minds and our spirit, not thinking about anything, just concentrating on how good the Lord is. Father, I stretch my hands to thee, no other help I know. If you would draw your hand from me, Lord, I'd be lost. Lord, we're so thankful. We're thankful for the things that we take for granted every day such as food, shelter, clothing, our friends and our families. Lord, you're awesome, and you're God all by yourself, and you're a miracle worker. Lord, I've come a long way. A year ago this time, I was at Mayo Clinic in a wheelchair, couldn't walk. You're awesome, Lord. And when people look at me, they're looking at a miracle, and I thank you for that, Lord. And I also thank you for the honor of sitting on the council that's just honored a man, Doug Young. Years from now, when we all are gone, people will look at the center we named after him, the facility, the fire and police building, training center, and we will reflect on saving lives. Lord, I thank you for this opportunity. And, Lord, I ask that we come together as a nation without disagreeing over politics, religion. Those are things, Lord, that divide our nation, and that we concentrate on your commandment, that we love one another. I pray, Lord, for the veterans, we thank you for the veterans, that they have allowed us and is still allowing us to enjoy the freedoms that we enjoy. I pray for the homeless, the sick, the shut-in, the bereaved, the ones in nursing facilities, the disappointed. And, Lord, let us not be so quick to judge one another. You know, we say, "Not until you walked in my shoes," but, Lord, we should say, "Just try on some of those shoes. You don't even have to take a step in them." And we pray for the people. Lord, we pray for our police department, our firefighters that are keeping us safe, and all of our citizens all over the city of Murfreesboro. And, Lord, I ask a special prayer for my beautiful new little granddaughter, Mariah. Lord, I pray that she grows up in a world where she doesn't fear, have fear in her heart, Lord, that she grows up to be a prosperous and happy and peaceful young lady. And, Lord, as we prepare to handle the business of the city, and as we go into this Thanksgiving season, Lord, every day is Thanksgiving. And as we prepare to handle the business of the city, Lord, we ask that you move in the midst of us, that we make the decisions that are pleasing in your sight. This is my prayer, Lord, that I ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and fair law.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Also, we don't have any ceremonial items, but with tomorrow being Veterans Day, I think it's ceremony enough. And then also, we did get to honor a veteran on Tuesday that we named Police and Fire Training Facility after Vice Mayor Doug Young. That was a great event. I know City...
Y'all are gonna make me cry again.
City TV 3, City Channel 3 was there, and so anyone hopefully can see that event, but there were a lot of people who came out for that. I want to thank the Police Department Chief Dur, Chief Folks with the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department and your team for helping put that together, so we greatly appreciate you doing that. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda. And I think there are a couple of questions that council members had wanted to get a little more input or explanation. One, the holiday pay policy moratorium and the recommendation on the professional services agreement for the Police Department or Headquarters. So, item B, number B, letter B in item G.
B-A-N-B.
B-A-N-B. So, let's vote on what we have on the consent agenda, and we'll remove those items.
I'll move for approval of consent agenda, 1, A, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Lance, do you want to...
Sure. Let me, I can talk about these briefly, see what questions I can answer for you. The proposal for the benefits consultant, that is with the firm Cowan. We have used them in this past two years, I believe, for analyzing the city's health insurance trends. Obviously, health insurance is very complex, so what Cowan does for us is, and they were selected actually in a competitive selection, should mention that at the very beginning. We did advertise for proposals. Cowan had been in the incumbent after reviewing the firms that proposed. The project team did recommend Cowan to be the benefits consultant, so they, their job is pretty extensive. They worked on identifying the wellness benefit this past year, but maybe their core service that they provide is analyzing the health insurance trends, what have the city's claims been, what's happening in the health insurance market in general, and then analyzing all that and delivering recommendations to us on increases that we need for our health insurances. You know, we pay health claims out of a fund set aside by the city, so it is important that we get that right. The second item on the holiday pay, moratorium, when employees that work at, say, our water and wastewater plants, police officers, firefighters, or anybody else who actually has to work one of the city's holidays, employees are entitled to holiday pay. And most employees do take holiday pay, which can be as much as two times, not time and a half, but two times their hourly rate. However, some employees ask for a floating holiday in lieu of getting the pay. They want to make up a day off at some other point in time. However, at this time, we know we're trying to look at a transition to arrears, but we're at the time of the year where we've got holidays on Thursdays and Fridays. We've got them this year for, obviously, for Thanksgiving. We've got them at, I think the Christmas holiday includes a Friday and a Monday. And in paying in arrears, it really creates a tremendous amount of work trying to make sure that that pay gets right, given the timing that we have to approve payroll and then have it approved so it hits the ACH. So, all we're saying is for those employees taking the floating holiday, they'll actually get holiday pay instead of the floating holiday. When we move to arrears, all that would get cleaned up. With that explanation, I'll certainly pause and see if there's questions.
So, that's the way it's been, though, forever. They've been able to do floating holiday, and so why is it different now? Why, that was the part that I really had the question about, is kind of why is it different this Christmas and Thanksgiving?
Now that we're using actual punches for part of their paycheck and then the schedule for the rest, the floating holiday really gets complicated with the Thursday and Friday and/or Monday holidays, because employees may be working on a Thursday or Friday, supervisor may have a holiday, and then we come back on Monday trying to make sure that that's all right. It simply is to make sure we don't make a mistake.
Would this start tomorrow?
No, we, this would start with the Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay, let me go back to A, to B-A. Benefits consultant, it seems to, you know, I kind of had the sense that maybe that's not something that we need every year. It seems like, you know, kind of once you get a plan set, you might be able to kind of stay with this, you know, a similar plan enough to where we have our HR staff that can kind of navigate through it well enough to get us to save a couple hundred thousand dollars here, is that not?
This is one of the consultants that we lean into heavily. The amount of analysis, the spreadsheet we get from them is enormous because they're analyzing all of our medical costs, looking at high claims. Miss Wright may want to help explain, because I know you touched some of them as well.
I think they help us with some of the Affordable Health Care Act provisions we have to, we have to file with the IRS, as well as the information we have to give the employees at the end of the year. They played a role in giving out that information last year as well. I think our HR department calls on them throughout the year as questions come up about how to handle different things. Excuse me. It's not just for coming up with the rates, and they do help us with bids if we have a bid come up, like long-term disability, our medical claims, our life insurance policies that we have. So, they help with a variety of things. What I would suggest, if you are uncomfortable with it, I would suggest we pull that item and then let Mr. Godwin come and explain how his department uses their benefits.
I guess, you know, the thing that I was thinking about it is, like I said, it seems like that might not be something that we need every year in eternity, but if it is...
Yeah, I would, I do support.
If it is, maybe we could hire somebody that could do that, that could be internally able to do that for ninety thousand dollars a year or seventy-five thousand dollars a year on average. That cost is probably not going to go down in the future.
But they actually did lower their bid for this three-year contract compared to the last contract.
Really? Well, that's good.
They did.
So, seventy-five thousand dollars a year.
They have access to a lot of resources we would not have, software and contacts. That's just something to consider. We don't have access to those things that they do because of their large corporate ties.
That we wouldn't have access to from other cities. This is a national firm that we're using, and they are, you know, one of the nationwide leaders.
All right, any questions on item B, A, and B?
Maybe something to consider, if there's some concerned amount, cost-benefit for these consultant fees, maybe the issue is, since it says strategic cost containment is one of their roles, maybe we could, you know, have some figure that they are saving us, that is it possible to say they have saved us a certain...
Our insurance fund, Miss Wright, has got, typically, it's well north of ten million dollars a year.
That sounds about right. Of course, we didn't have a premium increase this year because it is healthy. I know they have ties with some of the insurance providers, and they have, they provide the service to other large cities in the state. I think because of some of their ties, we've gotten some better rates and some information that we were not able to get the last time we bid this out with a different consultant. One of our, one of our goals is to get information on, on types of claims that we're having to see if we need to change our plan or if we need to, like the wellness, you know, they're assisting with some of the wellness planning, so...
I think for, for me, kind of just an overarching thing is that, you know, there's agenda item after agenda item, seems like of consulting fees. You know, we've got three on our agenda tonight alone and had one in our last meeting, and so I'll just, you know, I guess I'd kind of like to see that, but if everybody wants to move on with it, I'm, you know, I'm not, I understand that they probably are beneficial in some way, but if there's a little more explanation, I wouldn't mind hearing it, whatever.
We had, before Cowan, three years ago, who was it that was handling it?
Cheryl Morgan.
Right.
So, we've had assistance. This is a highly specialized, highly technical area that is beyond what, what staff knows to that, that kind of level.
If I could add one thing and just maybe give a little perspective, if, if we weren't using a company like Cowan, who does gain a huge amount of knowledge and leverages over a lot of clients on just one issue, the Affordable Care Act, and we had to go out and get the expertise that we would need on the changes and the implementation of that every single year, which it continues to grow and be implemented. The Affordable Care Act itself alone is that long, is that, that much paperwork, and the regulations are unbelievable, and every year something kicks in or changes perhaps as we go along. We would spend well over the amount that they're charging us for this consulting fee on that one issue alone, and they do much more.
Yeah, like I said, if it's something that we think is necessary every year, I'm just curious if it, the cost benefit is there, and if not, is there an alternative? If we're going to continue to do it every year like it looks like we have and will, is there a way we can save money by just hiring that person in-house, if that's possible? But it sounds like maybe not, so I'm, you know, I'm okay getting a little more information on it, but I'm not too hung up on it, so whatever you guys think there.
Do we have to make a decision tonight, or can we table it and get more information?
We've got time. We definitely will meet next week, and then I think the next meeting, it's Thanksgiving the week after that, and then first meeting in December, but we'd be ready by next week.
You guys be okay with us table this and get more information? What do y'all want to do?
If Lincoln just do something quick, or if y'all already go on with it, you can get it over with, I don't care.
When the word "highly specialized" comes out, that scares me a little bit, and what that makes me want to do is to find those people and those organizations that do this all the time that are highly specialized in training. Rick, I think there's an opportunity here for us to get information from insurance companies and other entities that do this that we wouldn't have otherwise. If we just chirked one of those people out of that job and paid them ninety-five thousand dollars a year, we may not have access to the data that they would have. I'm like you, I don't like to spend a lot of money, but I think this is something that's specialized and that we need to do, and we need to be consistent with it. It's an ongoing expense, but here again, our employees and our benefits are ongoing also, and they change, and we may have a huge change here shortly, and then we'll really be lost. So, I'd like to see this move on and take care of this tonight.
Good.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
All staff comments.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for a proposal for the benefit consultant. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. And I think we've gotten information on the holiday pay moratorium, so we'll need to get a motion on that.
I'm going to make a motion that we do not place a moratorium on holiday pay.
May I clarify a little bit what I think that would mean? I'm not entirely sure, but because of the way we pay to the schedule, and they pull the payroll at the first of the week, if the holiday's on a Friday, or Thursday or a Friday, maybe even a Wednesday, it means that if that employee is scheduled to work the holiday and doesn't, they will pay him for the holiday and then have to take the holiday back to put it on a floating holiday, because they, the employee hasn't made the election because they haven't worked yet.
So, that's what we'll do for Veterans Day?
No, this will start for Thanksgiving.
No, but...
They're trying to, they've already paid for veterans.
The moratorium will be for Thanksgiving.
It would start Thanksgiving.
So, then what you're explaining will have to happen.
We got paid today, but what would happen is if the employee wanted a floating day, they're going to get paid for it, and then they'll have to take it out of their next check to make it a floating day. It makes it really messy. That's the way I understood it.
So, that sequence will take place tomorrow?
Thanksgiving.
That will happen tomorrow?
It could happen tomorrow, yes. If they work tomorrow, yes.
I'm saying, we're already in that boat, so why don't we just, I mean, my, my take on it from something we talked about earlier is, let's quit changing the rules every so often and just, you know, we're going to have a holiday pay that is going to get switched over tomorrow, or has the chance to get switched over tomorrow.
Which means it'll come off their next check as, out of their pay.
And we're going to switch it up for Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then we're going to switch it up again when we go to payroll and arrears. I just, if we can do it, if it might make it a little bit more messy, but if we can do it just to get them through the end of the year, I just don't see why we really have to do it. So, that's the reason for the motion. Nobody wants to second it. We're rocking on.
This merely freezes the number of accrued vacation benefit hours until after we make the adjustment to arrears. Employees will be paid cash...
If we...
...rather than having the option to accrue those hours to their leave benefits. We're not taking anything away, we're just saying, until we get through the arrears process, we'd like to freeze that number of benefit hours, not continue to have to adjust it for the holiday season that's coming up.
We're not taking away money, but we're taking away options.
We're just taking away the option that you can accrue those hours for future use. We're paying cash instead of accrual for those hours.
Yeah, I'm just not up for taking away their options right now. That's, that's it.
Especially when, if we can work our way through it, I just feel like, let's work our way through it and not take away an option from the employees.
Jim, and I don't mean to contradict, but I want to really make clear to the employees that we've not made the decision to go to arrears yet, so it's, we want to say if we make the decision to go to arrears, because we've not really discussed those options yet. I just, we, at the radio show on Tuesday, I, it was as if it was a done deal, and I wanted to make sure that it was clear that it's going through a process, it's not made it to city council yet, and that's not something that we've, we've discussed. So, you have a motion on the floor? Okay, no second. Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have recommendations of the city manager to amend the professional service agreement with Kenan Cowan Workshop for the police headquarters. Mr. Lance.
We originally hired Mr. Kenan's firm in February of 2014. At the point in time we engaged them, we were heading down the road of our traditional method of delivery, which is design, bid, build. At that point in time, when we started researching what some of our options might be, as the city, city council made the decision to move to construction manager at risk, which is the more collaborative effort that we have talked to you about previously, where now the city, the architect and the contractor are all on the same side of the table, value engineering the building. Since we made the change in delivery method, we've, we certainly have added time to the project meetings, and through this process of value engineering, some additional things did need to be redesigned, and I believe Mr. Kenan's firm has and will continue to do this additional work, which was beyond the original scope. I would certainly point out that, you know, the fee as a percent of construction has actually gone down from when it originally started, and right now is a little over four percent. I know typically when we look at architectural contracts, we're normally looking in the seven percent range, so we feel that his fee has been modest so far. We feel like the change to construction manager at risk has absolutely been the right decision. The value engineering is going to lead to a better product for the city, longer lasting, and perhaps without some of the quality flaws we've seen in the past. Mr. Kenan has been outstanding through this process in making sure the city gets what it wants, and he has performed additional work since we made this change.
Hey, why I wanted to bring it off is because, again, sort of an overarching, a couple of reasons. There's an overarching thing here that, you know, we just keep getting consulting fee to death. You know, it's, like I said, it's over five hundred thousand just tonight for just somebody to tell us how to do our work.
It's two hundred and seventeen thousand in addition.
Total, all three of the...
Okay, I'm sorry.
And, you know, this is a firm that we just had a request for over two hundred thousand dollars to look at our space that we weren't really, that we deferred, and now we've got two hundred and seventeen thousand that I just thought was enough, that we shouldn't have it on our consent agenda, that we ought to at least make sure it's something we want to do. And I guess to a certain extent, the construction manager at risk, I mean, you know, this is, we just got through also talking about the idea that, of how the construction manager at risk saves us time, saves us money, yet his letter says the reason he's charging us more, two hundred and seventeen thousand more dollars is because we are nearly doubling the anticipated schedule and the associated meetings, revisions, and reviews that were anticipated through the low bid process. Doesn't really sound like less time and less money on, you know, on either one of those accounts, and I'm...
At the time he, we originally engaged Mr. Kenan, construction costs have absolutely gone up since that time. He was looking prospectively about, you know, what we thought the building was going to look like and what the costs would be, but as we got into the design, you know, we tried to design...
If we say no, will he be out? I mean, he's going to just not consult, not going to give us any, he's not going to be on the job anymore with us, or what?
Not about, you know, you've got a contract with him to, to design the building. I think what we're saying is conditions have changed. You know, we, he assisted us in finding the construction manager at risk. He has participated when we found the wall around the building, for instance, was, was a change that we asked for.
Those are all things we're paying him a million six to do, right? I mean, we're already paying him a million six hundred thousand dollars to do that. I'm not sure how many meetings you have to have in a four-year process.
We meet every two weeks, Mr. Lance, on site. He's out on the project.
There's expertise that I know they bring to the table, I'm just kind of...
Rob, why did the addition of the construction manager at risk increase the amount of time so significantly? It looks like more than a year.
A couple of things. The increase in amount of time is increasing his schedule, and it does, from an architectural standpoint, it does increase the amount of time that the architect is involved, because he, he's involved with the construction manager coming in. The traditional method is the construct, the architects will design in a vacuum by themselves, and then they'll come out with a drawing, and it gets bid out, and the contractor comes in. With a construction manager at risk, the architect will design up to sixty percent. That remaining forty percent is now a collaborative effort, so he's got a lot more to do and a lot more meetings to do. But what's happening is, constructability of, of his project is being assessed by the contractor, and we've already, from, from that process have saved, last number I heard is a couple million, probably a little bit more now, so every, those meetings every two weeks result in pretty significant savings off of what would have otherwise been designed, and he would actually have, what he...
Sorry.
Sorry. What, what's happened is, he's been gracious, he could come in early on and say, "I'm spending more time than what I put in my contract, and I will stop unless you pay me more." He legitimately could do that, and he hasn't done that. He's asking for it now because he wants to keep the project moving along, so I think it's important to realize that, and he's not a regular consultant. We can't do that building without an architect. You have to have a stamp on there. This isn't a service that we could do in-house or do anything else. I mean, this is a necessary part if we were going to take this project on one way or the other. So, I think he falls in a different category than he would any other consultant that, that you could...
I just don't know, I mean, I guess, I, I know he brings expertise, you know, I've, I've stated that, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how we go from one, you know, if one point six million is enough. It, you know, knowing, you know, he certainly knows things go longer. I mean, I'm not even a builder, but I know if you build a house, it's probably going to last longer than what the builder tells you when you, when you start the project. I know that never happens to Shane, but for other people it does. So, you know, it's like, hey, I'm going to bid this out, and let's just change it when we get into the deal, and then we're in it, and we got to pay you more, and if we don't, what do we do? I mean, we're, I mean, you're acting like we're, we're kind, I mean, you're saying it as if we're kind of stuck and we just got to pay the guy more. I'm just trying to figure out, is that, you know...
I think it, I think it's equitable in, in what he's done, certainly, I would agree with that. The other thing to consider is, he's at five, I mean, seven to 10 percent. Not an unusual...
That was going to be my question, and that I was, what are we paying? No, no, the, our architects that we hired to do, they're in Murfreesboro, Bailey Johnson Bailey. How much, weren't they, if I remember the last fire hall that came across, it was like eight percent.
It's, this is, this fee of four percent of construction is a good bit less than we're normally seeing, seven, eight, sometimes it's been as nine percent, and this is a renovation... And this is a renovation project, not go through a round of-
But they didn't understand the magnitude of this job when they took it and when they bid it, they did not have an idea of how many hours it was going to take. I mean, is this the first job of this magnitude that they underestimated?
No, the process changed. So we went from a process where they wouldn't have as many hours involved, to a process where they would have, if we had started with that process, anticipated a lot more time and probably would have set their fee, but again, they set their fee percentage-wise, and so, you know, we are working off a percentage, which does mean something in the context of this, so, you know, all things said, the request that is being made and the recommendation is something that's not unusual in large construction projects, and this is a large construction project, and it's a renovation, so it's a large, complex construction project. And to have our architect involved is something that's absolutely necessary to the extent that he is, using the process that we're using, I mean, having done these, I don't, nothing here is really unusual.
Craig, I'm trying to interpret what you're saying here, and basically you're saying that this contractor's not coming back and saying, "I'm not going to finish the project for you," and holding us hostage on it.
He's a professional.
Basically, it's our fault. We have changed what we ask him to do when he made his first bid.
Yes, to a certain extent. If we had told him to do it the first time, we'd pay the same amount.
At the start, and when we changed that, basically, we caused this problem, not the contractor or the architect.
Right, we asked him to do it for our benefit, and it is benefiting us greatly, I'm sorry.
And the construction projects you've seen moving forward are starting from day one on construction manager at risk. We believe that this is absolutely going to deliver us a better product.
One thing I would want to point out, is when you look into the details, KCW or Kenan Calhoun, they're not getting 1.613 million-
Oh, no, no, no.
-because the fee that they're getting, you've got structural engineers, mechanical engineers, all of these other third-party people that are required through building codes and that have to be landscape architects, all those different things, so.
Okay, well, look, I figured I probably ought to know instead of just saying-
Yeah, no, I think you're great, you're dead on bringing that up. And I would say, Mr. Lawrence, in a situation like this, it'd probably be good for an item this large-
Yes, sir.
-to discuss that one.
Yeah, yeah, it shouldn't have been in the consent agenda. Just, if we get something that's over $100,000, I think we need to at least have a little better understanding, and of course, we can pull it out, and I think the system took care of itself, but I mean, it-
So noted, appreciate it.
I have one more question. Is this the last time we're going to see this? Is this, are we going to, could we see this?
Mr. Kenan's fees?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that because we're not changing the scope anymore, I think this will square him away.
Man, we did, you know, I think that we've gone, you know, we heard loud and clear at the meeting, the town hall meeting that we had, Eddie, at Oakland's mansion, you know, we heard loud and clear from the residents that they didn't like that wall that was around there. And then we actually had several police officers who came up to us at that meeting and said, "Hey, we don't like that wall either." And we had already, as a council, two years ago, said, "We don't like the wall," but, okay, we're, so I know that that part was a pretty significant redesign in doing that.
I know that was one of the things Chief Durr early on said, you know, we need to, you know, make the change. We've had a change in police chiefs in this time, so I think you all will be very happy with the building when we're done.
Is there any policy shift that we need to make as far as when we negotiate that original contract going forward, so that we, you know, we understand what, if they understand if we have to shift the contract, is there some policy thing that we could make as an understanding, so that we have some consistency if this happens on another building?
Well, you know, I think we've seen the benefit of the contractor, the architect in the city being on the same side of the table, so that's why, any construction project of significance, we're going to start off, we already have, there's an item on your agenda later on, for, you know, for an architect, for the Doug Young Center, that's going to use construction manager at risk. So, yeah, we're not going to be making these changes, this was the first one, and-
And I think the larger, the more complex the project is, the more likely you're going to have an architect come back, because as he's finishing out the plans and the builder's sitting there with him, saying, "Well, maybe if we do it this way, it's going to be less expensive, because the market for some materials have shifted or something," then the architect's going to say, "Okay, I got to go back and redesign." So, you know, the likelihood of that happening, but your net savings is what you have to look at, not what you're just paying the architect, because your net savings out of it is-
Are we tracking that, so that we know what this project, because construction manager at risk, because of the process we chose, what we are saving, are we tracking that?
In detail.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, just because I'm afraid that wall builders are going to get harder to come by here in the near future, so before the price starts going up, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, you call the wall, I mean, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have the minutes to the November 3rd, 2016.
Before we get away from that, for people who are in peak physical condition like myself and Shane, we just approved the holiday pass specials for Sportscom in the consent agenda, and from December the 12th through December the 31st, you'll be able to get your passes for half price, so for people who are looking for their sports passes at Sportscom and Patterson Park, December 12th through December 31st would certainly be the best time to buy them, so we encourage you to get out and get ready for next year.
November 3rd to 2016 special meeting minutes, the public comment.
Move for approval.
Motion second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Second readings, consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 160Z44 to rezone an area along East Clark Boulevard to planned residential development, PRD District, cottages on Clark, 2016-440.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 160Z45, to zonin area along Barfield Road, the residential zero lot lines, RZ District, simultaneous with annexation.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 160Z46, to zone approximately 34.1 acres to commercial fringe CF District, simultaneous with annexation, and to rezone approximately 17.6 acres to commercial fringe CF District along Little Salem Road.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 160Z47, to zonin area along New Salem Highway to single-family residential 10 RS 10 District, simultaneous with annexation.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16057, amending the 2016-2017 Budget Second Amendment.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Will now move into first readings, and consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16056, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 21, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, creating Section 21-6, Unruly Gatherings.
Mayor, let me get started. Mr. Tindall and Chief Durr can be backup for us on this one. This is an ordinance that was drafted at council's request. In a community such as Murfreesboro, occasionally we have areas or properties that have large parties. These parties are disruptive to neighbors, so Mr. Tindall has done a good amount of research, we've worked with Chief Durr also to kind of learn some of the problems our police department is having on repeated calls or areas where these large gatherings are disruptive and not in keeping with the neighborhoods that they're located at. So we have drafted an ordinance, I believe it's been sent to you previously, might pause there to see if there's any questions that you might have.
There's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. I just want to make a quick comment. This started back with a meeting with Dr. McPhee, Rob, Chief Durr, when Dr. McPhee had called about some issues that were happening on campus, and then it's evolved into really the first piece of information that we've actually had through one of our retreats that have come through, so I want to thank staff and the council. This is a good, really a good process that we went through and to get to this point. So Ms. Wright, without fear, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16058, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 21, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Section 21-5.3, and Chapter 28, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 28-9, Regarding Unlawful Situations.
Likewise, this is-
Solicitations, I'm sorry.
Likewise, this is another ordinance that was something that the councils talked to staff about a good amount. I know you've gotten public feedback in common on, Mr. Tindall has drafted an ordinance dealing with the sidewalk solicitations. I believe this has also been shared with you previously. Mr. Tindall, is there anything you needed to add?
Nobody has any questions? I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation interim director, a contract for athletic lighting.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me. My first item is a contract for athletic lighting, and I'd like to recommend acceptance of a bid for athletic lighting at Richard Siegel Park and at Old Fort Tennis Complex. At Richard Siegel Park, the lighting of four more fields completes the lighting that was master-planned in the original construction of that park. As you know, the more lighted fields will allow for more playtime and allow for better field rotation to reduce wear and tear on the fields. And at Old Fort Tennis, the final eight outdoor courts will also be lighted, allowing for increased play at this fast-growing sport and area as well. Both projects will really allow us to better serve the community. Two bids were received for this athletic lighting project. The low bid of night electric for the lighting of the four additional soccer fields and for eight additional tennis court fields combined is $939,000, I'm sorry, $939,650. These funds have been designated within our capital planning, and with the unanimous support of the Parks and Rec Commission, I'm here tonight to recommend approval of the project, and welcome any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Now we'll consider amendment number three to the contract for the West Park A&E Services.
We are very excited to begin planning for the park to be located in the west part of Murfreesboro on that recently purchased McDonald property. Tonight, I'd like to ask your approval to amend our contract with Kimley Horn and Associates in order to move forward with the park master planning for tasks that include project coordination and meetings, that will include a kickoff workshop, focus groups, landowner meetings, community input meetings as well. Other tasks will include surveys, base mapping, preliminary concept development, architectural concepts, and that final master plan. Kimley Horn and Associates was selected through the request for qualification, request for proposal, that was issued in November of 2012, in order to select the team to provide professional and technical services for the development of the park. The evaluation and scoring resulted in their selection, and they teamed as a part of that approach with several different other firms, including Huddleston Steel, Johnson and Bailey, Weiser, Griggs and Maloney, and several others. The Murfreesboro City Council approved a contract in 2013 for the site selection services, and with the recent purchase of the McDonald property, we are looking to move forward. The adequate funding is allocated for professional services in our capital improvement plan, and we're recommending the approval of contract amendment number three with Kimley Horn and Associates for professional services for the development of the park in the western part of Murfreesboro. Any questions?
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Is there an estimate of what this is costing? I mean, I see the basis for the charges, but I don't see a, what is this going to cost?
There will be a hourly fee, and I believe that was included in your packet for what that works with.
Yeah, I see that, I just wondered what the total cost of-
Let me, got an email from Jim while I was sitting here. I think we've found out that next Thursday at 5:00 is clear with all the council's schedules. What we'd like to do is have a work session with the council and the Parks and Recreation Commission, not to design the park, but really to talk about the process to plan the park. The public input sessions, the public input sessions and work from the Parks and Rec staff will identify potential uses, and then from those uses, we'll start figuring out budgets and the elements. Is it going to include A, B, and C? Is it going to include D, E, and F? Where should it be located? How should it be arranged? But all that is going to require a public process and significant input from the council, from the Parks and Rec Commission. So next Thursday's really talk about the path to go down.
I got you.
But all that is going to require a public process and significant input from the council, from the Parks and Rec Commission. So, next Thursday's really talk about the path to go down.
I got you.
So, we're really not going to have much of a feel on that until we have our public meetings and find out what they're wanting, and then we'll try and come up with a budget as to what we can afford.
And really, what we want to talk to you about next Thursday is to make sure that the concept and the path that we've identified is what you guys want. If it isn't, we'll adjust because we haven't done anything yet, but we want to get that confirmation from you before we even get started.
I have a motion in a second. I guess we just need a vote.
I just wanted to have the suspense of that, making notes. Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I was sitting here taking notes on West Park, so I really have it all figured out if we want to just-
Just go ahead and skip straight to that part.
We're ready to start construction.
We're really excited to get started with this.
Yeah, we are too.
It's going to be fun, yeah.
Change order number one for the Jordan Farm Soccer Practice Facility.
Okay, the Jordan Farm Soccer Practice Facility. Phase one, as I'm sure you know, is currently under construction. It includes six full-size soccer fields as well as parking and entry road from Cherry Lane. Lowson Associates has submitted change order number one from the contracts, from the project's contractor, Landscape Services Incorporated, for the addition of rye seed to the soccer field and 500 pounds per acre in installation, I'm sorry, at that, and as well as some installation of irrigation couplers. The phase one construction deadline has also been extended to December the 15th of this year. Plans for construction were based on grass sprigging for late summer. However, delays in the construction over the summer will require an additional application of the ryegrass in order to protect the fields over the winter to allow for practice in early 2017. The original construction contract with LSI for work on the soccer practice fields was in the amount of $1,300,000. The contract sum will be increased by $46,000 with this change order. I'd like to recommend approval of the change order. Shane Lamb is our turf manager, and in addition to the great work he's doing on our athletic fields, he's been helping in the coordination of the project, Mr. Lamb and I are happy to address any questions. If they are specific to grass, he's going to give you a better answer than I am.
Grass discussion was in California, wasn't it? We're not having that.
California says hello.
All right, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Hey, can I ask you one thing, Ms. before we get going? You know, we've just looked at adding some lights. Are we, do we feel like that's good? I mean, I know that we kind of talked about not doing lights in phase one at the Jordan Farm. You know, do we feel like the lights out at Siegel is going to give us a good enough capacity for now? I mean, I just want to make sure as we're going through this, do we need to kind of add that to discussion, or we feel pretty good about that?
The lights at Siegel is going to increase our playtime in terms of reaching-
Does it increase it enough?
In terms of enough and reaching that need, I think you could speak very well to the popularity of soccer, the needs and the request for soccer fields. It is certainly going to help. Is it going to bring us to a point where we never, where we aren't going to need more and more and more? I certainly think it's a good step in the right direction.
Okay, all right, yeah, I understand what you mean. Okay, thanks, I just-
You bet, thank you.
Hey, one last question as well. I'm just trying to get updated on where we're at on these lights again.
Yes, sir.
Have they converted over to LEDs on those type of lights, or are they still kind of the old-fashioned bulbs and stuff that we've known for years, incandescent, I guess, what to wear?
They are an improved light, and I know that there is a lot of enthusiasm over the directions that they can be focused. The specifics of the lighting themselves, I'd be happy to follow up with more information with you on that.
Yeah, I know a lot of our parking lots and stuff have now gone to LED lighting and stuff, and they're more efficient, not only from electric standpoint, but longevity and length of life seems to have increased significantly. So, I was just curious if they'd done that on ball fields.
You bet. There's also a lot of, as a part of this project, a lot of controls to be able to really, you know, it's not just a switch on the wall. There's really a lot you can do with them.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, now, consider recommendations of the assistant city engineer regarding the states of Prim Springs, Satinwood Drive barricade. Ms. Huddleston.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, members of the council. I'm here to talk to you tonight about Satinwood Drive and a barricade. I think you should have up on your screen an aerial photograph with some lines on it. And some hesitation, we bring this to you. I feel like at the staff level, as we've dealt with this issue, we were pitting the wishes of the planning commission and city council and the expectations of the neighborhood on one side with the public health, safety, and welfare needs, emergency response needs of the neighborhood on the other side. So, it's a little bit tough for us to bring this to you, but we felt like it was important based on some recent events. What you have before you is a map of the Thompson Lane, Sulfur Springs Road area. Estates at Prim Springs is in the yellow, Prim Springs is in the purple, and Thompson Lane would be the white road, and then Sulfur Springs Road would be in green. And that's our situation there. Let me bring your attention, and this was covered in the agenda item, emergency response event that happened on October the 3rd. Murphysboro Fire and Rescue and Rutherford County EMS were dispatched on a medical call to Palomar Drive, and I'm going to make a mark on our screen here to show you about where Palomar Drive is. They entered Thompson Lane and Satinwood Drive from the Prim Springs neighborhood. The GPS systems in the trucks directed in that way, but they encountered a barricade that you'll see on our map that's circled in red. Both emergency response vehicles had to return around. This was a medical call, by the way, and had to backtrack about 2.1 miles coming in off Sulfur Springs Road. It added about four minutes to the response time. We received some calls from that, from the neighbors who actually witnessed emergency response vehicles encountering the barricade, turning around, driving around, and coming back through the other side. And then we confirmed that with the shift captain and got the details of the call. November the 6th, we received a second call, brush fire, estates at Prim Springs. The shift captain reported back to his command, who brought it again to engineering department's attention, that it, the barricade again, caused a bit of complications because it was a brush fire, not a structure fire, and had the ability to spread on both sides of the barricade. Their observation was the barricade could have caused a lot of logistics and disruption in the ability to fight that fire, especially if other companies were called in, and they need to be able to work back and forth between the neighborhoods. So, that's why I'm here. We've got a barricade up, and to give you a little bit of background, Prim Springs was approved for zoning in 1999. Full buildout of that subdivision occurred before 2006 as a 91-lot subdivision. In 2005, we received a zoning application for the property highlighted in yellow, and that was a planned development. The first residential permits were issued in there in 2008. The project entered the recession with many other development projects and really stalled out for a few years, but it's back under construction, back on track. That plan included 113 lots. Eighty of those lots have been created, 72 permits have been issued. The next phase, the 33 lots, is a pending phase. The planned development booklet that we received in 2005 was approved with a condition that Satinwood Drive not be used for access into the neighborhood until 75% buildout of the fourth phase was completed. We're not there yet. And so, city staff, working with the developer and the contractor, in fulfilling the wishes of the planning commission and the mayor and council on approval of the zoning plan, we had the developer to install a barricade. And we felt like that was the thing that we should do because it was the wishes of the planning commission, mayor and council at the time. The developer approached the planning commission to modify that condition, and it was denied at planning commission, and they did not pursue it any further. And so, I bring that to your attention tonight, and I would like to recommend, I bring to you staff's recommendation of how we might approach this. I'm going to flip pages here and bring up another image. What you'll see is an excerpt from the zoning plan. This is just estates at Prim Springs. In this area, right here is the barricade. The parts of the map you see in yellow and green have not yet been constructed. The brown, the blue, and the purple have been constructed, and that's where the current construction is. What staff has done, we've reviewed the zoning plan, the zoning ordinance, and we requested from the developer that he submit a request for minor deviation. We've reviewed the zoning ordinance and zoning plan and believe that the planning director has the authority to approve a minor deviation. However, since this was such a sensitive issue through several public hearings and dealing with the mayor and council, and I know you've received calls on both sides of the issue, before we approved that minor deviation, we want to bring it to your attention and see if you concur with staff's recommendation. A minor deviation would be to approve a 70% level of the lots created. In essence, what that means is that the subdivision meets that standard today, and we think it's a minor deviation because the zoning ordinance is very specific on the impacts of minor deviation, and it does not change those conditions. One of the things I would like to put out, point out to you, is that the pending construction in this subdivision is actually, those two sections right there, their best access is going to be here and not here. And so, we felt like the practical side of it, by opening the barricade now, would be able to give access for emergency services and routine service delivery, and there would not be that much additional construction traffic demand. Most of that demand would continue to be served off Sulfur Springs Road in getting into the green and yellow parts. So, our recommendation that we ask you tonight is to concur with our approval, our request to approve the minor deviation to change the buildout standards in the zoning plan. Be glad to discuss this, answer any questions, or hear your comments.
Did you say that the planning commission denied this?
The planning commission denied a request in 2013 to modify that, and so, the developer chose not to pursue it any further.
What would prevent us from just putting a crash gate in there, a Yelp gate or something that would-
It's a public street. Public streets, we do not, we do not do this. This restriction is limited really to the construction process and not to the full connection of the street, but it's connecting two public streets together and-
Can we do it? I mean, you said we don't, but can we? I mean, like, we don't deviate without approval, but can we deviate on the crash gate and just say, "Yeah, that's what we're going to do"?
My suggestion would be not to establish that as a policy or standard for public streets.
Michelle, I know, this was, this is a, I think, I remember when this came to planning commission, and the residents on Satinwood Drive and in Prim Springs were adamant that they did not want that opened up because of mainly construction traffic because-
Correct.
Any contractor that's going to do work back there, they're going down Satinwood Drive, they're not going to drive all the way around Sulfur Springs.
They're going to take the shortest route, and the other thing we know, which has changed very significantly in our transportation industry, is the use of computer-aided or GPS-aided routing. The commercial software packages that are out there now see this as a connection, even though it's not there physically, and deliveries and contractors and emergency services and others looking for addresses are being routed to this barricade today. And quite honestly, we don't have control of that. That's commercially viable software.
I'm with you. I think, so, a little background from my standpoint, I guess it was probably eight months ago, I can't, six or eight months ago, I can't remember the date, but the homeowners' association president of Prim Springs, not Prim Springs Estates, made a request that that barricade, you know, had been opened up, or that it was, it was open, and there was a lot of construction traffic that was using that. And so, she very nicely emailed me and called and reminded me that there was a, we had said this is what we would approve in the planned development, 75%. So, that's when staff contacted the developer, they put the barricade up. And then we had the issue with the emergency service call, and then we had the residents at Prim Springs Estates all emailing us saying, "Well, we want that opened up because we want to be able to get back there." The part I'm having really a tough time getting around is it went through the public hearing process, it went through the planned development process, it was approved by planning commission, it was tried in 2013 to be amended, and the planning commission voted it down, and I don't, in my opinion, this is just for me, it sets a bad precedent for us to go administratively, even though we feel like we can administratively change a planned development without it going through the processes. That's-
I think you summed up the sense of staff as well. We analyze those same thoughts, and you understand then our concern about bringing this to you. It almost appears as we're pitting two neighborhoods against each other.
Yeah.
2015, the barricade was installed 2015 as a soft barricade, which meant that it was fairly easy to move, but what made it easy to move also for emergency services, made it easy to move for contractors and vendors and deliveries, and it's just something that city staff could not adequately police. So, we increased the barricade, made it more difficult to move, which also made it more difficult in the event of an emergency for emergency services to move it.
Is there a way that, now, I see Chief Fokes standing, sitting out there, that, I know that for Station 7, they would be responding to that call there, and so, really for Station 7 to be coming, it's quicker for Station 7 if it's a Prim Springs call to turn down Sulfur Springs as opposed to drive to Prim Springs and drive through. Is it something that we could have the adequate information to our police department and our fire department to let them know Satinwood's not open for emergency calls? Is there a way to do that?
Yes, sir, we can load that description in the CAD as far as the calls go and where the calls are at. I guess the issue is, like we mentioned, if you had an incident, brush fires, and other things like that that are going to extend, it's going to limit our access to hydrants from one neighborhood to the other, and they're interconnected, so that hydrant layout within that subdivision is going to limit our ability to get water in certain areas and that extension. And the other thing is if we had a structure fire, even if it's a house fire, your second company is going to be coming from Memorial, which is ladder six. And so, their access is going to be coming from North Thompson Lane into that subdivision, and so, they would be much faster to much of the subdivision than coming off of Sulfur Springs. And so, that's our concerns as far as emergency service delivery, and I understand the neighborhood concerns as well, but, you know, we're concerned with public safety and adequate access.
Sorry, back to Mr. Huddleston here. Listen, to me, all right, so to me, it kind of sounds like a layup that this is a perfect spot for the emergency gate. I mean, you know, not from a public road standpoint, but from, we can kind of kill both birds with one stone. Emergency services can get in there, and we can keep everybody else out, right? I mean, that's kind of what I think we all want to do. We want to live up to the promise that we made to the Satinwood side of Prim Springs, yet we also want to help the other side get services in the best, you know, fastest manner we can get there. So, is there a way that we can formulate this where we don't set a policy, but we-
Let me just offer a couple of commentaries. The connections of public streets, and those continue to be ongoing issues with plans and things that come through, but I think this issue really brings to the forefront what staff believes and what emergency services believe are very important planning steps is to connect neighborhoods through public streets. So, I'll offer that commentary that connecting public streets is vital importance to delivery of services.
I would think we would get rid of it once 75% is met.
That's right. So, let me offer this commentary. This is a temporary condition, and so, as a temporary condition, once the subdivision meets the standards, the barricades come out. And so, from that standpoint, we are talking about a temporary condition. The second thing is the installation of the crash gate and Yelp mode and those sorts of things, is that a thing we pass back to the developer and say, because the developer's not providing us emergency services, the city is? Or is that something that you would suggest maybe we look at a public funding source?
Let me offer this. Let me get with Chief Durr, Chief Fokes, maybe Mr. Hillis, to see what our options are to, if emergency services needed to get back there without the full, we've seen emergency crash gates that are going to be there permanently, and they're obviously designed to a higher level, but let me see what we can do to find something that might be an interim, less expensive measure, realizing that when the planning commission, city council threshold is met, it would be removed. But let me work with them to see if there's a-
Yeah, I can't speak for the other council members, but I really am uncomfortable when we, when you have two bodies, including the planning commission that approves this, and we sort of usurp that, and I know staff is too.
We are, absolutely are.
You know, I even think if this is going to be something that was, would be approved, that this really would need to go, it's a planned development change, so it needs to go-
Let me see if I can identify something that would still, you know, function as a barricade, but police and fire could get through there quick enough. I don't know what that yet looks like, but-
The bar across it with some signage and a chain on it so they can cut the chain and go, I mean.
We've got some locking things that I think we can take a look at. That's why I want to huddle with our team to see what we can come up with.
We may, and Ms. Huddleston, if we, if you guys did decide that you wanted to put up some type of temporary measure, I mean, I've, in Metro, in several different- up, uh, some type, type of temporary measure, I mean, I've, I've, in Metro, in several different, um, Metro Nashville, and several different developments that I've been in, and there's a, a stubbed street, you know, they will put up a sign to let residents know this street will be extended, you know, just to let residents know this street is stubbed for a reason, it's gonna be extended at some point, so that way people don't think it's not gonna be extended. So maybe we could put something up that says this is a temporary measure, but, um, the, the residents of Prim Springs, from talking to the homeowner many months ago, were very passionate about us living up to what we, we told them.
Let me see if I can, we can find a compromise on this one that maintains the, the barricade until the threshold's met, yet emergency responders can still use.
Do we have a motion to defer this?
Well, just one question, one more question.
Sure.
How far are we from the seventy-five threshold?
Well, it's a, it's a, a perfect timing-
Thank you.
Mr. Shacklet, uh, something I did wanna to update you on is timing, the, 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 the build-out and takedown of lots right now is about one per month. Uh, so they have about, um, current demand, they have about six or eight months of, of inventory left. What I also tell you is that this property, this developer, um, uh, which is Regent Homes, um, is, is pulling out of the Murfreesboro market, and so they, they are actually looking at selling the balance of the property. So, uh, we've lost a little bit of the momentum and energy of build-out out there simply because Regent Homes has pulled back. Um, just this week, Mr. Shacklet, the, uh, the new developers had a contractor contact the city of Murfreesboro about scheduling a pre-construction meeting. What we didn't know up to just this week, uh, was when they would actually start the next phase of construction, and they really have to do the next phase of construction to meet the build-out standards. Um, so with, with the promising, um, uh, contact to, to schedule pre-construction meeting, you know, we're probably, um, six months away from getting, uh, these available lots on the market, uh, in, in the, in the two sections, the green section and the yellow section, which, which moves pretty quickly to, to meeting that standard.
What happens when we've approved this plan, and you, you're saying there's, the present developer is selling the existing lots?
The balance of the development, there, the, and if we'll go back to the screen here, and you can see it there, but those, that section right there is really, is nothing on the ground, no streets, no drainage, uh, it's really raw land ready to be, uh, ready for us to put, uh, roads, drainage, water, and sewer in, and that's what's necessary to create the lots. And once the lots are created, the build, the takedown of the lots will, will move toward the-
But this design, they're tied to this develop, this plan?
Yes, that's right. This plan isn't, isn't-
Developer has to develop it like this.
Isn't changing.
So how many of those lots have to sell before it's seventy-five percent?
Um, there are a hundred and thirteen lots, I don't remember the math in my, in my head, but they, they need to be just about, um, ninety lots or so.
Seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, if they sell the property, then whoever owns that property could have the opportunity to go in there and do a different PRD on that property, and-
Very, very unlikely, because the slot and street layout and the infrastructure and utility connections are already there to support, uh, the development, the development plan.
Unless you just change the size of the lots, maybe from a smaller or larger line, yeah.
And, and there was a question about that we need to defer, and actually staff just brought this to your, to your attention, uh, to ask for your concurrence, and if, if your direction is to, to bring it back to you at a later date, um, I'm comfortable with that, Mr. Lyons, if you are, that, that we'll bring a, we'll bring a, um, we'll review it and bring something back to you at a later date.
But this all may go away within seven to ten months, simply because of the takedown of the lots.
That's correct. I, I think that's a, a reasonable estimation. It's, it is a temporary condition, it's just, um-
If we treat it as a temporary condition, we probably won't get in as much trouble as if we try to lock it in, I, I, I think that's, I think you're on the right track. I think time's gonna solve the problem, hopefully, hopefully soon enough to let the neighbors get this opened up and cleared up. Uh, but we did promise them that seventy-five percent, and I think we should hold them to that. We need to be the people that are doing what we're telling people we're doing.
Let's at least make sure that the public safety folks, you know, that we've let the neighborhood know that we've got that dialed into their computers, and we really shouldn't be having to U-turn at the, at the barricade next time. I mean, I think, I think that should fairly well satisfy the folks in the new side.
Well, still do.
All right, can I have a motion to defer, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider recommendations of the assistant city manager with a contract with Kenan Calhoun Workshop for architectural services on the public safety training facility.
Mayor and council, uh, staff's ready to recommend a contract with Kenan Calhoun for completion of all the design and development function on the Doug Young Public Safety Training Center, uh, at a fee of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Of that amount, seventy-two thousand dollars is actually for the architecture, with the remaining approximate sixty thousand dollars covering all the subspecialties, uh, geotechnical, civil engineering, mechanical, electrical plans. Uh, what we'll have at the end of about fifteen-week period is a bidable set of documents. We are not recommending at this point in time the contract administration and follow-up services. We are currently out on the street seeking a construction manager for this project. We would like to have that construction manager onboard and have them review the administration piece of executing the bidable plans. Uh, we, I, I think it is next week that we open proposals on construction manager for the training center. Uh, at any rate, in this contract would be space needs assessment, programming of the actual building floor plans, and full schematic designs ready to bid. Uh, we'll try to answer any questions you have, but thinking about fifteen weeks for actually completion of the plans.
Mr. Crumley, the numbers are reasonable, is the percentage of the contract and the percentage of the total cost?
We felt the approximate hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to get us through the entire design phase, the bidable documents, was very reasonable. Uh, we had a few questions about the contract administration piece, but not about the design of the, of the buildings and, uh, the layout for the property.
You feel pretty comfortable that we won't have to add to this later?
I, I don't know how we come back and cover the contract administration portion and the actual inspections and stuff. And that's where I feel like we need the, the professional help from a true construction person, uh, to look at that and give us advice as to whether those fees are correct, a little heavy, a little light, what we need to do. Uh, that is really one of the strong advantages of using a construction manager, is bringing that different set of skills to the table really early in the process, where they can help us through that part of contracting for a, a pretty complex set of buildings and structures. Uh, not only will they help value engineer those structures with the architect's plans, but I believe they can help us some on the administration side of this.
So you think we will be adding to it?
We will have to come back and have some form of contract administration and-
With this firm?
Inspection skills. I, I think so. Uh, they've done a great job for us at the police headquarters building. Uh, we've had good experience with them on, on that project. I don't know why we would, uh, run into anything different going into the training center.
Did we bid it?
We have not bid this. Professional services, we go out and negotiate. Uh, Chief Fokes and I did sit down with Mr. Kenan in Nashville about two weeks ago and asked him questions about his fees, uh, and the fees of his subcontractors. Remember, this is not all architecture. It includes all the other disciplines required to put that bidable set of plans on the table and to carry that all the way through as a turnkey project if necessary. So, uh, I think, I think we've got a fair set of pricing here.
I can't fully understand all of it, just to be right honest with you, but here's what I'll say to you. I'm not sure it's not a bad idea to not use the same firm for every building project we have in town. I'm just, let me just throw that out there, and, and if we're not even kinda bidding out the services, you know, we get into a spot where, you know, like I told you about the construction manager risk, I'm, I'm trying to learn about it a little bit more, and I'm understanding it a little bit better, but, you know, one of the big problems I had with it was that there's no kind of benchmark, you know, I mean, the, there's no, there's, because there's no low bid process, somebody who doesn't know much about this stuff doesn't have kind of a place to start. So, when we're not even bidding it out from here, and then, you know, we already kinda know what happens, we get a year down the road, and they're gonna come back and they're gonna say, hey, we got more meetings than we anticipated, and so we need to add fifty thousand to this consulting fee that we didn't anticipate. I mean, I, I just kinda tell you that makes me a little uncomfortable, I guess is all I'm saying. And again, I know I don't know everything, but you know what, that's, that's why we have you guys to explain it to us and do this stuff, I guess.
And, and I understand the hesitancy. I too have questions sometimes about how heavy some of these fees are. That's really one of the reasons we're not suggesting we do the contract administration piece tonight. We are not exclusively using Kenan Calhoun on our public safety buildings. Uh, Fire Station Four is a Johnson and Bailey project. We have scattered work on many different city projects across the architects that we know and are familiar with in the region.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, we're not exclusive with KNW, they have terrific public safety experience. Uh, if you've seen the police headquarters in Franklin, that's one of their products. Uh, we've just seen the emergency communication center in Williamson County, that is also one of their designs, and they're, they're both, uh, very, very first-rate designs, very, very classy buildings.
We have the opportunity to, um, open bids for this, all right?
Yes, the construction itself is bid on this project. The professional services, hiring the architects and engineers, we have not sought competitive proposals.
But I'm, that's why I'm saying we can seek.
In, in Tennessee, we're prohibited by the state law in seeking competitive pricing proposals on professional services. You first look at qualifications of your professionals, judge who you want to use based on qualifications, and then start to negotiate a contract on pricing. If you fail in negotiating a contract with your first choice, then you drop back and begin negotiating a contract with your second choice. But Tennessee law prohibits us just taking low bid proposals on design services, engineering services.
What would prohibit you from negotiating with the first person, going to the second person, finding out that they're hiring, and then going back to the first person because they were cheaper?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know that there would be any prohibition against that, uh, other than, you know, the, just, it, it does, I think, ask some ethical questions when I'm negotiating in good faith with one provider of services at the same time I'm taking pricing from a second.
Sounds like we locked in to just one person. And, you know, seems like that's kinda unfair to other people. I'm sure other, uh, companies do business and have just as good a, uh, quality as, you know, I just kinda hate to see us lock in on all our projects with one company.
And, and again, councilwoman, we've not done that. Johnson and Bailey is designing-
Well, with two companies, the same two.
-Fire Station Number Four. Uh, that is, uh, we go to the design review committee with the initial proposals on it on Monday. I will be bringing back, along with Mr. Anderson, design proposals on an extension of Black Fox Elementary School at our next council meeting, and that is a Johnson and Bailey project. I, I don't feel like we have specialized on one particular architect.
Well, we're just going back and forth between Johnson and Calhoun, it seems like, right?
We, we've used those two firms extensively, but, uh, again, I, I don't think we're picking on one all the time. We're trying to share the work among good people that have shown expertise in these particular areas. And again, Kenan and Calhoun, we've seen two of their buildings in Williamson County that are very, very good examples of how quality their work is.
And Madam, we've done that in the past, in the last ten years, to try to bring as many people in as we can, local people that are very well-qualified, so I don't, I don't think we're playing one against the other. I think we're getting the best opportunity to-
No, I wasn't insinuating that.
No, I know.
I just see the same two.
Well, cream rises to the top, so, yeah.
Well, you know, the one thing that you, you look at with, like, Johnson and Bailey, 'cause I had this question several years ago, um, they, you know, designed every fire hall that I think we've, and I don't wanna say every fire hall, every new construction fire hall that you, we've built, so once, and then they've done most of the school projects, the last one was Pitterd, um-
Oraw Creek?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I think of Pitterd when, I remember, um, Mr. Johnson said at the opening that, you know, he, he cared for Mr. Pitterd so much, he would've done this for free, and I wanted to say, well, we accept. But, um, so I, I will say from a construction standpoint, you have to be very careful on who you get on the architecture side, 'cause if you do not get a good, someone who knows what they're doing, and if you get someone who is just the, the low bid or the cheap person, it ends up costing you so much more, more money during the construction process. So, uh, from my standpoint, if we've got someone that we feel comfortable with, we know the pricing is fair, it's reasonable, then I, I think there's a lot that goes in saving taxpayer dollars by making sure that the people who are designing it are-
Oh, I'm not against, I just was questioning.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, the same.
Yeah, you're-
I know they do quality.
And that's the question I, I had, if we build the same fire halls, you know, my question at one point was, well, if we've got the plans on the fire halls, we've built the same fire hall ti, you know, time and time again, the architecture fee, they don't change their architecture fee, it stays the same, but, uh, you would think sometimes that that would go, go down, so.
And again, just to be clear, we will be bringing back another contract for these types of professional services at the training center. There will have to be some construction administration, some contract administration, but we want the construction manager to review that before, for pricing purposes, before we bring that back to you.
I know we don't know definitively, but is it still anticipated that architecture's fees, construction administration services fees, and construction of the facilities will still fit within that two-point-five million CIP?
We think we're a little bit short on that number. I think the project, uh, way, the way we've priced it now, Chief Helpme, we're probably just over three million dollars-
Okay.
-on the center.
No further question, I move for approval.
That's, that'll do it.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Hi. Purchase, we're gonna hear from the purchasing director regarding, uh, on the department update.
We're gonna push that a week.
Okay. Um, I've got a recommendation to, for you, uh, Gary Green is, I think, uh, Gary got the, the, uh, CTC worked on that, and that was sort of his last hurrah, so Gary is, after many years-
He's gonna remain the chair of that, by the way. He's still gonna remain the chair of this.
Gary's been phenomenal, so Gary's, um, has retired, and the library board actually has recommended, uh, to appoint Jimmy L. Tyson to fill that vacancy, so tonight, um, we've got that in front of you to, um, a motion to appoint.
I move for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in a second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. And, uh, we had the recommendation to put a commi, community panel or a task force to study bike-share opportunities, and so, uh, the Parks and Recreation Department, uh, and we've put together some, some names, we have Ricky Turner, who will be representing the park commission-
the park commission, Kent Seiler at the Greenway Committee, Brenda Waters, uh, or a designated with the Stone River Battlefield, uh, Alan Farley, AJ Farley, Friends of the Greenway, Josh Stone is MTSU's representative, Barbara Wilkie, Rutherford County, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Scott Gravy, or a designated with the fountains at Gateway, Angela Jackson or a designated for the Parks and Recreation Department, and Jim Kerr, uh, for the, uh, Transportation Department.
Please.
Move, we approve.
Second. Motion in a second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, do you have one other thing? Um, we had our board and commission appointments, but for some reason I left off, um, the ARC committee that Councilman Shacklet serves on, so I wanted to make sure, no pressure that you still be willing to serve on the ARC. So, and I don't think we need a motion to appoint, because those are all, um, do we need a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Doug and.
Rick.
Rick.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, have one more committee. Um, we had the solid waste committee where we all met with, uh, GB, is it?
GBB.
GBB. And so, uh, Mayor Burgess, we met and he recommended that, uh, we, we have our city committee and the county committee, and then he has asked, he's serving on the committee, so he recommended, he thought it would be a good idea that I serve on the committee as well, so I'm slated to serve on the committee. We've got Kurt Wade representing the city council, Paula Tour is representing the Chamber of Commerce and Murfreesboro Businesses, we have Joe Whitfield, Assistant Vice President for Facility Services at MTSU, and then Jeremy Harrison, who's representing All-in-One Recycling in the, the, uh, solid waste private sector. So would ask for those, uh, appointments.
I got one other thing, too, when you're done.
Is this just the city's part of it, or is this the entire committee, the solid waste committee?
No, you have, um, the city has five appointments.
And then the county.
The county has five.
Yeah.
Smyrna has three, and two, and.
Two Smyrna, two of our, one Eagleville, five City, five. Fifteen is all.
The, the only question I had was why, do our solid waste directors need to be on there?
Well, these are, um, so these are, they are ex officio, they'll be there.
Okay.
They're staffing it.
Okay, okay.
These are actually citizens and community panel that will be on that, on it.
All right, okay.
Can I go back to one thing? We buzzed through it, but I, I just want to, I want to go back this, um, we can make this real fast if you guys don't want to do it.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
So moved.
Motion in a second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, do we have any beer permits?
Not tonight.
Uh, we have one statement that needs to be paid?
Yes, sir.
Let's pay that bill.
Second. Motion in a second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Tindall, um, back on sixteen oh fifty-eight on our solicitations, every, everything is basically a twenty-five-foot, um, distance. Is there any issue, and I just want, you know, we can, if you guys just nod your head or shake your head, we'll go along with this, but I'll go, go away quickly, but twenty-five feet is basically from here to the podium, which is pretty easy to be talking to somebody from here to there, and, um, can we make, can we do it, can it be seventy-five feet or fifty feet, or is that getting to where, I mean, is that, is there anything, we just need to keep it at twenty-five?
My advice to keep it at twenty-five.
Okay, done. Okay.
Well, it's twenty, twenty feet, I think, is what I'm reading, where.
Is it twenty or twenty-five?
It's twenty-five on, on all the, the list for, under C.
Under C?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, I was kind of thinking along lines of difficulty to measure, you know.
Yeah.
Whether I'm here or there.
In the A portion of that, it says twenty feet. It, do we need to have that, it says continuing solicitation within twenty feet of a person being solicited after a person has made a negative response. Does that need to be the same, twenty-five, twenty-five, or? That's number three, uh, three A?
Sorry. Twenty-three and a half. Um, that's, that's the, well, uh, in, in five point three, um, the twenty feet is having to do with the solicitation in aggressive manner. The general solicitation restrictions, which are the twenty-five feet, are prohibiting any type of restrictions within, um, within that area on specific locations, time and place.
Is it?
The definition of aggressive is, is, you know, to, to stop and then.
I, I was just thinking, if you're trying to figure this out.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm five feet difference, you know.
Well, it's, yeah, it's.
It, should it be the same, so that there's some consistency between how you.
It, it could, it could be the same. I, I don't think anybody's going to be pulling out yardsticks or, or measuring tapes. There's some, some.
Yeah.
Not at the time, they might be cited, and they could, they could make the argument.
How, how you can make the, I'm just saying, when you try to bring that to court and somebody says, well, I was five feet difference.
Make it easier from an enforcement standpoint for everything to be twenty-five, I mean.
It could, it could be twenty, the same. We could, we could make, we could, we could, um, change A three to twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, for this amendment to the ordinance. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business that would come before the city council? If you, uh, council members, if you wanted to put on your calendar a couple of quick reminders, we do have, uh, on Tuesday, the fifteenth, we've got the joint power board and, uh, city council meeting, and then also on the seventeenth, we have lined up, um, I think Nate's out there, um, we're going to help Feed America load up their, unload some of their trucks, aren't we, Nate?[1736.23]